I do have the official minutes for all of us.
We're going to call the January 14th, 2020 Macon County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. I guess Mr. Turner, I guess we need to ask for, can we adjourn and reassess?
Let's recess. We'll recess to the courtroom, large courtroom on the fourth floor of the Macon County Courthouse, by West Main Street.
We'll read in five minutes?
In five minutes.
Do we got a motion?
Don't move.
Question back to Commissioner Bill. Second, back to Commissioner Shields. All in favor?
Right. If we could have the sheriff make a note and leave on this door for those that might be coming in late, so that they would know to go upstairs if there's not somebody left down here to direct them upstairs.
Derek, do you have a sheet of paper?
I'll take care of it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
So what I need to do is anybody that did not have an opportunity to sign up to speak during public session.
No.
Anybody that has not had an opportunity to speak during public session, that's speaking on any subject you want about, all you've got to do is sign up. But you have to sign up. Is there anybody that needs to sign up? Now, here's a catch. If you know somebody else has signed up for a specific subject you're here for, you can still sign up for that same subject. And if, when they conclude their speech, if you think they've done a good job, and you don't need to hand them, when they call your name, you can just say, "That's what been said." He's said a great job. He did a great job, and you don't have to come up and speak. So get on the agenda. If you want to sign up, just come out here and sign up. Is Eric, Eric Hager in the room?
He's right here. We'll call the Macon County, January 14th, 2020. It's fun to say. A meeting of the Macon County Board of Commissioners to order. I would like to welcome all of you in attendance. We, as commissioners, like to see interest from the public, and this is an overwhelmingly large crowd tonight. So I've been granting tonight. One of the reasons is because I'm a little nervous. I hate speaking in public, so it's a little bit different speaking all of you. But two is, is that it kind of warms my heart to see somebody people here that are interested in what's going on with Macon County. We're here to serve, and so we're happy to have you here with us tonight. So with that being said, we've got a fairly long agenda tonight. I'm going to try and breeze us through it fairly quickly, to the best of my ability as chairman. I would ask that you feel free to get up and move in and out of this room as you need to. Just try and keep your phones silent, keep your conversations silent, so we can be focused on what's happening. If, after a public comment period, which sometimes happens in our meetings, this crowd shrinks somewhat, we may move back downstairs. We have a little better audio and video down there, so that our meetings can be broadcast. So there's a chance we may recess, move back downstairs if the crowd thins. If it stays large, we'll be right here with you until we get wrapped up. Again, I'd like to thank you all for attendance. With that, we'll get started. First item on our order of business tonight is the oath of office for our new tax administrator. We'll about debate it as soon as this oath finalizes. I'm Mr. Abby Braswell. Abby, would you welcome to come up? Everybody has some family members with you tonight. Abby, welcome. Hey, Jay, if you have anything to say, you want to read or you want to repeat after me? Okay. I, Abby Braswell.
I, Abby Braswell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will not allow my actions.
And that I will not allow my actions.
As tax administrator.
As tax administrator.
To be influenced.
To be influenced.
By personal.
By personal.
Or political friendships.
Or political friendships.
Or obligations.
Or obligations.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As Macon County Tax Administrator.
As Macon County Tax Administrator.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Abby.
Mr. Chairman, may I give her a chocolate cake I baked especially for her now, or should I wait?
You have to run that by me. I'm with the head.
All right. Item number two on our agenda, announcements. Any announcements from the border staff?
No. Hi. Mr. Chairman, the county manager and myself will be returning to Washington on 28th. Of course, we'll be going there to talk about broadband and a little bit of media. We'll be going to the Tewksbury, following Tewksbury. So hopefully, we'll get some more information about our broadband situation as it tries to unfold.
With that being said, let's all rise. We'll observe a moment of silence, and I'll ask the county attorney, Mr. Jeffery James, to raise his plate.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do not have a public hearing on our agenda tonight, so we're going to move into our public comment period. Our general protocol for our public comment is we ask that you address the board to what you would like to, and we try to ask you to keep it within five minutes. We have, it's like we have nine people, so that's almost an hour. We somewhat stick to our, that five-minute rule. If you have, if somebody has already spoken over to something that you would like to address, and you feel like they did a good job, you can just stand and say, "I agree with them," and we'll take that and mark it down in our records. So with that being said, the first gentleman, looks like Mr. Lee.
That will be Ms. Lee Berger.
Ms. Lee Berger, retired school personnel. Welcome, Lee.
You're not the first person to make that effort, Derek. When I was 18, they tried to end up me in the military. And that's why they weren't telling girls.
That's a very good point.
Thank you, Commissioner Saath. Those of you in the audience, appreciate it. My name is Lee Berger, and I am a retired high school educator in the Macon County school system, as well as president of the local unit of the NC Retired School Personnel. We had hoped that Patty McClure, one of our retired educators, could have had the honor of presenting this resolution to you, but she is currently recovering from a fall. Coincidentally, today, the North Carolina Association of Educators, as well as the North Carolina Retired School Personnel, were speaking this morning on WRAIL, the local Raleigh TV station, about the current budget impasse in the North Carolina Legislature. And you see that I do have concerned educators in the audience. Thank you. After I read the resolution, I will be distributing copies to you all, as well as the media and everyone else. But as a teacher, I wish that you listen first before you read. And for the audience, as well as for you, I'll briefly describe the graphs, which will be in the resolution, but obviously, the audience won't get a chance to see them, but you will. Resolution for the support of a request of NC General Assembly for a 2% cost of living adjustment for North Carolina retired teachers to be included in the fiscal year 2019-2020 NC State Budget. Whereas, North Carolina teachers entered the profession, worked for the state and North Carolina students, in most cases for 30 years or more, while they contributed significant portions of their own salaries in the North Carolina Teacher Retirement Fund, with the expectation that the monies would not only be paid out in installments during retirement, but that the installments would be maintained in terms of purchasing power with regular cost of living adjustments, as they had been for decades. And whereas, inflation has risen 18% since 2009. This is from the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics. But North Carolina teachers have only received three: 1% cost of living adjustments, and two: one-time, non-recurring bonuses of a total of 2.6, resulting in the North Carolina retired teacher being more than 15% behind relative to inflation. And whereas, since 2007, the state of North Carolina has not maintained that covenant with its retired teachers, with resulting impact of retired teachers falling further and further behind with their purchasing power of their retirement checks. The failure to maintain regular cost of living adjustments for NC retired teachers has meant a cumulative loss of over $22,000 in purchasing power for a teacher who retired in 2007, assuming an original $25,000 annual retirement installment in 2007. And the first set of graphs will show that from 2007 to 2018, cumulative inflation impact and the cumulative shortfall to retirement income is based on this $25,000 baseline. To repeat, based on these numbers, cumulative shortfall to retirees' income is $22,899.36 since 2017. And whereas, the governor recommended a 2% COLA, cost of living adjustment, for retired teachers, but members of the NC General Assembly voted to give retired teachers only a 1.5% or .5 bonus. That will be an average of 105 to 150 one-time payment for retirees of four taxes. And whereas, teachers who go to work for the state beginning in January 2021, one year from now, will no longer qualify for state health insurance when they retire. And whereas, enrollment in the 16-member UNC system, schools of education, have seen the educator enrollment go from 18,428 students in 2011 to 13,161 in 2018, a decline of over 28% due to the public teaching profession not being as attractive career option due to lagging pay, current classroom support, the aforementioned end of healthcare benefits for retirees, and the failure of the state to maintain cost of living adjustments for retired teachers. The final graph just shows that particular decline in downward enrollment in people's education. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the Macon County Board of Commissioners request that the North Carolina General Assembly end the current budget impasse by submitting a budget which includes the governor's recommendation of a 2% cost of living adjustment for North Carolina retired teacher. Approve and adopt it this day, as you choose to sign it if you wish. We only ask, we're asking not for money, we're asking that you step forward and support your retirees, and ensure that there are retirees in the future in Macon County. Nancy Scott will be passing out a copy of the resolution.
Thank you, ma'am.
Do you have comments from the board?
Are you in a timeframe? Can we study this and look at it in February?
You may. The question was if there was a timeframe. I'm used to Mr. Shields not speaking as loudly as I can. We would love it if you would sign it tonight, at the end of your long meeting, and send it on down, since legislature opened today. But if you take it up in February, and sign it and send it, that would be wonderful. We thank you.
Does this include the teachers that are entering the profession in '28 or '21, that they're no longer have health benefits?
Now, this particular resolution only addresses the retiree pay, but we can certainly come back with further resolutions from the current NCAE group, and certainly support from retired school personnel. We'll be more than happy to create a resolution that asks that, you know, those issues be taken care of down in legislature as well.
What might be even worse than what you talked about, Ms. Berger, is the state treasurer, who's over the state health plan. And he basically sent out a letter, if I read right, and I was having to be down there at the end of 2018, basically said, "Y'all talk too much." I just read that into it. He didn't say that. But the health plan, the way I understand it, you know, he put a lot of numbers in there, how much it's spent and whatever, but that's not what they're doing. That's not what all these folks signed up, and you made a great point about the teachers we have now. What are they facing in the future?
When I entered the profession, I was assured that I would have health insurance at no cost. And as all of you can tell, we do pay now. Not, we don't pay admittedly as much as some people happen to pay, but we do have to pay.
We just catch you went out, only three hospitals had 169 signed up, by the way. So that shows you where the policy was at then. So I think, I think not only y'all have a real argument, but it's just the right thing to do.
Would you like us to come back in February with a resolution about the other current education issues?
I would. I would.
All right.
I think the healthcare is just, to a lot of folks sitting here, not any of us getting any younger, but the healthcare thing is huge.
It is huge.
I mean, it's, and that's one person responsible for that, so.
I will get with the local association, the local educators, the actives, as we call them, and retirees, and we will come up with another resolution. We still would like for you to sign that when we say no.
Thank you.
All right. Donnie Holden.
Everybody's older than six foot nine, can do anything. All right. All right. First of all, we'll thank Mr. Dave, Dave Hurt, for his participation, while I'm speaking on. We got 245 signatures in 24 hours. All right. Second, I'm Harold, my own accord, I'm not affiliated with anyone. All right. First of all, some of you may know me, some of you may not. My name is Donnie Holden. I'm a lifelong, seventh-generation resident of Macon County. I want to thank the people, the commissioners, county manager, appreciate it, for your time. I hope everyone is aware of the direct overreach of Virginia, of the governor's call for a $4.8 million eighteen officer team to enforce his proposed assault weapons ban. This is a result of a bill on the table in Virginia's General Assembly. If it is passed, it charges to be a Class 1 misdemeanor to import, sell, transfer, manufacture, purchase, possess, or transport large capacity firearm magazines, which will be known with a ten-round capacity magazine, as you can believe. In the same bill, the charge will be a Class 6 felony to import, sell, transfer, manufacture, purchase, possess, or transfer large capacity firearms, silencers, and trigger activators, all defined by the bill. This bill, if introduced into law, will give a grace period to destroy, alter, or relinquish steamed firearms and magazines posed in this bill to local law enforcement by January 1st, 2021. After that time, the above mentioned, if found in possession, will be a Class 6 felony. Opposing, we get ahead of Raleigh, the state of North Carolina, making the same choice as the state of Virginia by making a statement to the state and federal government and passing legislation making Macon County a Second Amendment sanctuary county, in hopes that Macon County, in more counties in North Carolina, will follow suit. The Second Amendment sanctuary refers to a county's commitment not to impede on individuals' rights by the Constitution and the Bill of Rights, that many people have died to protect. This guarantees an individual's right to protect themselves, their families, their humanity, their security, and their country. This is a statement through law and guaranteeing that local law enforcement and judicial ranks that are second to the rights defined by the Constitution will not be impeded. As 113, 2020, these six counties in North Carolina, Cherokee, Lincoln, Rowan, Rutherford, Surrey, and Willows, have adopted Second Amendment sanctuary resolutions. I am asking the county commissioners to schedule a vote to adopt resolutions and commit to the freedom of Macon County residents during the February 2024 meeting. I am ashamed that our country has fallen as far as it has in loss of liberty, humanity, and common decency over the last 20 years. With that being said, please, please support passing legislation and support the people's Second Amendment rights. Let me leave you with a quote from Thomas Paine. Government, even in its best state, is but a necessary evil. In its worst state, in a hole, the heart of the conflict, the more glorious it trots. Reason obeys itself and equals submits to whatever is dictated to it. Thanks for everybody's time. God bless America.
Thank you.
Don, you want to break through a motion in February?
Yes, sir. From the school.
These other counties already have a resolution.
Yes, sir. They're already in play. Everything's on path.
So will you use the same one?
We can't. I'm going, I've got, actually, I've got a ready one. Ready? I'll kind of, yeah, I want to run back through it some more, make sure it's ready, and let's do this again next month.
Some of those six other counties already have a resolution.
Yes, sir. They have already adopted the resolution and put it in legislation.
That may be a situation where we need to read, review, and study it in May, June, March.
Well, we can do that, as long as we're bringing it. Okay, we'll get it all worked out. I just want to, we'll get all this, I see if it's separated, passing around, it's just a little bit difficult or something. The counties, it's all in play.
The other counties in North Carolina, if that's passed, are they all, are they all using the same document? Or are they adopted?
Each county's got their, each county's got their own resolution. Everybody's claiming that there's a security. I'd rather look, call the regular resolution, start it, it passed, and make one resolution.
That's making me do.
Well, I'll go with all of it. You have a sense?
Thank you for that.
All right. Chris Browning?
First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Holden for a very well put together presentation to the board, and especially all the people that showed up tonight to support the Second Amendment. My concern with the whole Second Amendment resolutions, as I've been saying, is, as he's presented, I hope the board will adopt the resolution, but I also hope that the board will not adopt a resolution that is watered down. We don't want to adopt a resolution just to say we got a resolution. We need, first of all, most of the power will be withheld within the sheriff. If he chooses to go enforce a law that could impede this in Second Amendment, then the resolution's not good. But then again, if the sheriff standing here decides to go with what's been asked in not enforcing a gun law that could come through the state legislature through Raleigh, that would be against the Constitution that he swore to uphold. If he decides to not enforce that and do what's right within the Second Amendment, what we're fighting for tonight, then that's where the resolution within the board may back him up, because you can bet if that was to ever happen, you're going to have lawsuits coming out the wazoo. But he ain't got the support from y'all, and the county attorneys, and the money to back him, and he's left out to hold off some. My concern is, as y'all work on this, make sure that it's put together right, something that's going to have meat to it if it ever does come down to that, from the sheriff and the board as a combination. That's really all I have to say. It was obviously covered very well amongst the Holden, but I've been reading some of these, and there's some of them that's been watered downwards. It comes up, it's really a thing or two, it's not going to do much good. But then there is some really good ones, like the Cherokee County and some others. I agree with Mr. Holden, it's not necessarily just to go adopt somebody else's resolution, you know, put together what you think's right. I thank everybody for their time.
No, thank you. We need, we'll need to review that resolution, legal counsel, everything. So as soon as, what's your timeframe on trying to push this through? I mean, present it or get it timed out.
I'd like to have it done next month. By next month, that's awesome.
When you get that resolution, I mean, if you bring it in next month, before I put it on, I got to take it and read it in a little, you know, a little slow and digesting stuff.
There ain't no way to get it to you without actually presenting before the board.
Yeah.
We, can we go ahead and get it in, and have it ready to vote on for next month?
Yes, sir. It's a pleasure of this board. As soon as you get it to me, I give you time to study.
Okay.
The work on the second resolution, eliminating gun-free zones on county-controlled property.
Yeah, I know that one's a.
That's the next step. Anything to do with education, because that, and, but, we're.
Right, right, right.
I despise gun-free zones, target zones. As soon as you get us a copy of that initial sanctuary resolution, the sooner we get it studied. We may be prepared to vote on it next month.
That'd be wonderful. We'll get it done soon. I will get it to you if everybody's good with the getting it, aside from Courtney.
And if you'll funnel it through the county manager, he'll get it to us.
We'll get it done. Appreciate it. Thank y'all.
Mr. Browning, a question for you.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned in your comments there about lawsuits, and it made me think, our, I know this is obvious, that federal laws and state laws supersede what we can do here in Macon County. So whatever they say, that they're, that again, that they rise above what we have power here to do. Are you aware of any lawsuits that are addressing this issue in Virginia? And I think that was mentioned in the last, there are lawsuits going to this. I mean, it seems like something that's going to pop up somewhere.
Well, the only thing I'm reading, that's the whole point of my Virginia's doing this. You know, you've got sheriffs that, they're the ones that took the first.
here in Bacon County, so whatever they say, that again, that they rise above what we have power here to do. Are you aware of any lawsuits that are addressing this issue in Virginia? And I think that was mentioned in the last, there are lawsuits going to this. I mean, it seems like something that's going to pop up somewhere.
Well, the only thing I'm reading, that's the whole point of my Virginia doing this. You know, you got sheriffs that, they're the ones that took the first stand. They said, "We're not going to allow this to happen in our county, no matter what we have to do. We have to depopize people, whatever we have to do, we will not let it happen to our people."
That's the extent of it.
Right.
Absolutely. But you're not aware of any?
Well, it hasn't quite started yet, but they're ready. And obviously, you know, within anything like that, if it ever comes down to that and they have to do that, just like the red flag laws, you know, that's the same thing, which is, from my understanding, that's part of the inclusion up there. That's something that I would see that could very well happen in the future, like in Irish State or Georgia. You know, it's spreading across, so I'm sure everybody's seen that Haversham passed last night their resolution. So, you know, people get on board, it needs to be prepared to get ahead of this thing. Don't sit around and wait like Virginia, I'm sure at one point they thought that number would be facing there.
So, were you aware of any cases across the country that are...
I think it's just that preparation. You know, the board would need to be prepared if it come down to that, to back the sheriff, and what he's prepared to do. But also be prepared if that lawsuit does come, you can almost guarantee some, you know, anti-gun people will do it. That's their way of trying to silence things, bring that lawsuit down. And hopefully, what they're hoping is the board's going to back off because they don't want to stand in the fight about the lawsuit.
I think the sheriff's ready to do that, he's sworn to uphold and protect the Constitution of the United States, so I'm sure he's ready.
Exactly, yeah.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Chris, I didn't understand the red flag law.
I can explain it to you. The red flag law is for, if somebody deems it a danger to themselves or others, they can go in and take their guns, such as mental health and other things, that's part of the red. That's the big thing about red flag laws. You have to go before a judge, the judge has to order it for the gun to be taken, before the gun to be taken. That's to help people who are a danger to themselves or others. That's a big thing about the red flag.
Let me make it very simple, Mr. Shields. If I go crazy tonight and I'm involuntarily committed, and I stay in a mental health facility, if they don't red-flag me, then there's a possibility that when I get out, I can go and buy and purchase a handgun or another weapon and commit violence against.
But what if my ex-wife just gets pissed off at me and decides to come over and say I'm crazy? Or they come and the sheriff comes and takes all my guns? That's going against my constitution, right? Because I had no due process in that at all.
That's how wide open red flags are.
Yeah, if he chooses to enforce that law, and hopefully he wouldn't, I know I wouldn't, absolutely not. You don't go against the Second Amendment that's in the Constitution. When you take a oath to uphold the Constitution, do your job.
Can't dictate as of, depending on the town. If you know it's just what the Constitution is, the Constitution.
Read the Constitution, it's very plain that a law that builds against the Constitution is not a valid law.
They're going around due process, is what they're doing. It's paperwork and they do what they want to.
Thank you.
Have y'all got a little association with something local?
We need to, we do need to. Here I am.
I can look at that, work with Mr. Holden, that's the one that got all this going. Where it is here as I am to pledge support.
I'm going to move this on.
And work with him and do whatever we can to help him.
Thank you, I think we got some more people going to be speaking about this. Camera is one act regarding backyard business. Welcome. Camera, did you file? Did you file to run? Congratulations.
Anyway, this is not a serious, is what people are addressing tonight. Or is, you know, happening to those with the Second Amendment rights. This is about backyard businesses, I didn't know quite how to title it, but I don't know if you saw this, it's in the Bacon County Muse and Shopping Guide, volume thirty-seven, number thirty-three, Thursday, January ninth. Neighbor's dog kills fifteen chickens. Owner seeks more than restitution. I don't know if Mr. Haggard is here tonight, or...
He's here.
Okay. So, they'll be speaking also. So this is a very complex situation. I've read this article, and there's so many different issues in here. I support small business, you know, as a Green candidate, you know, as a member of the Green Party. We want to have more local businesses, backyard businesses encouraged, right? Small business, in addition to have the corporations, so we're not so dependent on corporations. So I just want to say that, I support small business. I'm not a pet owner, I haven't been a pet owner. But what happened in this situation is allegedly a neighbor's dog killed fifteen chickens. That's the issue.
It's eighteen, but continue, sorry.
I'm just wondering. So, the issue is chickens. So, apparently, as I was reading this, what I'm concerned about, and what I want to bring to the initial is that the Haggards are running an egg-selling business out of their backyard. Okay, so they have approximately, from this article I calculated, thirty-six chickens. Okay, these chickens produce eggs for their consumption, and then they also sell them. So, I called the North Carolina Department of Agriculture to look into egg laws, there's an egg law, and I spoke with Bill Bruin. And if an owner has less than three thousand layers, it's not regulated, okay, by the new SVA. So, this product, there's a couple of issues, is when the law does, when the egg law does apply, it requires farmers to check their eggs to see if they're fertilized, right? If it's fertilized, then it's not going to be sold to those other regulations I've applied. And then they also have to be sure that the eggs are refrigerated at the proper temperature. So, there's no salmonella, S E, risk. And this is really serious, because people can die from S E. I'm just going to read it. Especially young, young consumers, the elderly, pregnant individuals, and those with compromised immune systems. So it's not a minor issue to make sure that this product is being stored and sold in a safe manner. So, that's really my main focus, consumer protection. And another thing that came out of this whole situation is, these chickens are apparently, thirty-some odd chickens are considered pets. You know, we have like animal control here, right? So sometimes animals have to be registered. So, that's another issue, but there's a lot of, I believe it's in a residential area, thirty-some odd chickens, you know, that are unregistered, or although they are contained in the yard apparently. Then, another really seemed a little bit out of control, sounded like, from the article, the dog got in the yard again, and then Mr. Haggard shot at the dog and tried to kill the dog. So, it's very emotional, and became very heated, and I don't know about discharging a weapon in a residential area to try and kill the dog, which just damaged your property, right, and possible liability. Another issue would be, this product that's sold, are taxes being paid on that? So, again, I think what I want you to consider is, where does the county want to regulate these type of businesses? I would hope that we're going to have more small business, and we want to encourage that. And apparently, according to Eric Bruin, backyard eggs are considered to be tastier and healthier, and, you know, they're very, they're in high demand by consumers. So, anyway, I just thought, this is something to consider. I don't know what we're doing about it in terms of regulating this type of business, but, you know, we want consumers to be protected, but we also want to encourage small business. So, that's why I wanted to bring it to your attention, thank you very much.
I think what we need to remember, though, we live in a rural community. From time to memorial, people had chickens, had eggs, that's going to continue as long as people have chickens and eggs. And I don't need to speak in person, I don't see this board ever regulating anything about chickens and eggs, or people selling their eggs. That comes under the state. It's still, we still have a rural community, and that's going to continue. I'll just, to my speed, let you know.
Yeah, well, I think that's a very valuable opinion. Like I said, I support that, I support small businesses and backyard businesses, I think that's a good test.
And they do too.
But when a child dies from S E, or an elderly person dies from S E, or a pregnant woman dies from S E, that is going to be an issue, that's what we want to prevent. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron, Yorrell Purple?
May I follow Mr. Haggard? Eric Haggard, he's going to speak on the dog issue.
Mr. Haggard, is that fine with you?
Yes, sir.
All right. Strange. I'm going to stay in line, I'm sorry, Mr. Haggard. Okay, Mr. Haggard, I'm going to stay in my order here, she is asking if you would follow me, so we've got Jeff Prebs up next.
That'll be two minutes.
Sorry, I thought you were going to call him, yeah.
Nope, it's okay. I had just heard that they were beginning discussing the Second Amendment sanctuary cities, so I decided to come and just make a statement, I'll be finished in a second. And I apologize, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but I'm really talking to these people, and there's nothing that needs to be done by the commissioners. So if you don't mind, if I turn this way a little bit. Just in case, I just come from a meeting with Mark Robinson. Mr. Prebs, if you don't mind, can you speak to the microphone and direct your comments to us, please, so... Thank you. I just came from a meeting with Mark Robinson, who's running for lieutenant governor. There was a snafu in the media, and said that he would be speaking with people either last Friday or Saturday at Jeff's gun shop, but actually, it was tonight at five o'clock. So I didn't want people to think that when they showed up, for some reason, he just did not show up, he was supposed to be here tonight, not last week. So, Mark Robinson is totally for Second Amendment, the Constitution, Declaration of Independence, and you can get on YouTube and put in Mark Robinson for lieutenant governor, Second Amendment, and you can hear what he stands for. And again, he apologizes for any problems from people showing up and him not being there. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, again. All right, next up that we have is Susan, I'm sorry, I can't read your last name.
That's okay, may I also speak after Eric?
Eric, is that fine with you?
Okay. All right, Eric, you're up this time. Thank you.
Really, really hard this time.
I'm so happy to read your high statement from my phone, which I typed up. I did not come to this meeting thinking I was going to have a second issue regarding the situation I'm going to speak about, but now that it's come up, I'm going to address it really quickly. As far as the backyard business, that the previous people were referring to as it pertains to our chickens, it's like a couple of dozen eggs a month that we sell, so it's not really a business, it's just what we do. I'm not going to be speaking about anything as important as teacher, healthcare, or the Second Amendment. I'm going to talk to you about another issue in this county that has affected us recently, and rather tragically in our eyes. On January sixth, I received a phone call from our neighbor that there was a dog in their yard killing our chickens. We have thirty, we had thirty-six chickens in our fenced-in backyard, a six-foot privacy fence surrounded by thirty-five-foot evergreen trees. We didn't raise these chickens for meat. They were and are our pets, who also happen to provide food by laying eggs. Just like any pet owner, we love our animals as part of our family. They had names, they had personalities. They have a place in our family, just like any other pet that you own. Over the past several months, we observed a husky mixed-breed dog with a red collar running around our neighborhood, finding it numerous times in our yard, in our garage, if we left the doors up, and even up and down our front porch that we caught, captured on our home security camera. The red collar did not have an ID tag on it that we could see, and while the dog never showed any aggressive tendencies towards us, we knew we did not like the dog being around our yard. In the numerous times we had previously seen this dog, it would run off up the road in the same direction each time. We were never able to figure out who the owner is. I even posted the dog's picture on Facebook on December eleventh, hoping someone would know who it belonged to. I spoke with our neighbors up the road, Franklin Police Officer Tony Ashen's wife Amy, who told us they also did not know who the dog belonged to, and that they had seen it running around numerous times. Back to January sixth, receiving the call from our neighbor. It had taken five chickens out of our enclosed yards where the dog had dug and pulled lattice off the fence to gain access. And once the dog made its way into our yard, our pets were easy prey. As any, as an owner of any pet, I cannot imagine what the animals must have been going through while this dog was systematically murdering our chickens. It took me eleven minutes to get home, and when I got home, I had to go in through the garage, up the back door, around our house to unlock the gate, because that's how you access our backyard. I was recorded on camera, as was the dog, silently, painlessly, in our garage while I was in the backyard. When all was said and done, fifteen chickens were dead, five in the neighbor's yard, three outside the fence, and the rest of the dead ones were inside the fence still. Dr. Jessica Scruggs arrived on scene to tend to the injured, and while performing her duties, stated to me that the dog, by the manner in which it killed all of the chickens, in her professional opinion, did it for fun. The dog did not kill our chickens to eat, it was not hungry, it was a very well-fed dog. My wife went away home from Silva Call Animal Control, responding officer seemed very eager to assist us at first. He drove up the road, tried to locate the owner of the dog, he was unable to locate the owner, but in the report that was filed, wrote that the owner had called him that evening to report the dog missing. And yes, I shouted at the dog when it was in our yard, which is my right, as told to me by the animal control officers. The next day, the animal control officer came back to the house and informed me that he had discovered who owned the dog, that there was no sign of the animal at the residence. He then showed me the dog's, the dog owner's Facebook page, and informed me that the owner also had two other dogs labeled as dangerous animals. I'm standing before you this evening to ask this. How in the world is it allowed for someone who has had two other dogs identified as dangerous to be allowed to own any pets at all? How is it that a dog can run loose, break into an enclosed yard, kill innocent pets that were doing nothing but living their daily lives? Where they were protected, and they were not loose, and was very ranging, they were in our yard. Would this situation be treated more seriously if there was another dog that was attacked and killed? Or what if this dog had forced its way into the yard and killed a child? Of course it would be taken more seriously. How is it that my wife and I could have been raising some of these... How is it that my wife and I could have been raising some of these chickens for the last four years and treated differently? It's just chickens, right? They're stupid. Not a big deal, just get some more. Who cares? What we do. It's infuriating to think that people who live in all of our neighborhoods, excuse me, it is infuriating to think that because there are people who live in all of our neighborhoods who have no regard for anything or anyone but themselves, they're lazy, lack respect for others, and if it's not theirs, they don't give a crap about it. How is it that these people can have such a devastating impact on the lives of so many because they don't care? And because of that negligence, we're the ones who are affected. Because this dog owner couldn't be bothered to figure out how to best secure his dog, and because the penalty for having dogs identified as dangerous is so inconsequential, this will more than likely happen again to someone else. Why do I have to walk my yard, carrying a weapon of some kind, worrying that this dog might come back to finish the job? I'm standing before you here, begging you to seriously take a look at the ordinances that were changed in 2010. Real change that will create an impact, an environmental responsibility to pet owners to be determined. Create an environment of responsibility to owners of pets that kill, mate, or attack other persons or pets. Fifty-dollar fines and possible surrender of the animal will not keep people from continuing to be negligent owners. Animal control is inundated with nuisance calls, and it is an unspoken and common knowledge that they won't really do anything anyways. And I mean no disrespect to any of our Animal Control Officers, because that's not what this is about. And how is this okay? How does this continue to be an issue for the residents all over Macon County? Thank you for your time, and I'll be happy to speak with any of you concerning this in the future. Thank you.
What do you live by?
Buck Shepherd. I know who the owner is, I got his name, and we haven't seen the dog since, but when I got the report from Animal Control, it stated the fact that it happened, and that's it. I was told I could go to the magistrate's office, or I could go to the small claims court, and that's it. I read the ordinance that was signed in 2010. I'm not, people not owning pets, this particular individual, has been an irresponsible pet owner numerous times. And now here we are. Our chickens are our pets, like your dogs, or your cats, or anybody else, because they're in the backyard and they lay eggs and whatever.
But just so we understand, there was three dogs?
There, there was a dog that did this, a single, a singular dog.
But he's previously owned two others.
He's had two others.
Does he still have those, though?
We don't know. When the Animal Control Officer showed me the individual's Facebook profile, said this person has two other charges of nuisance, dangerous dog. I don't know if they were taken, I don't know any of the, how that was settled, and something about misdemeanor charge associated with those two. That's all we heard. And when I spoke with Animal Control on Thursday, I was told that they were waiting on a vet to tell them or give them some guidance about the animal, but we can't find it.
Eric, there is a, I served on the dangerous dog board. I always, I legally counsel the dog. There is a process that we can go through to evaluate that dog's behavior and things like that. We're going to go through one on January the 30th. It's, it's there. You know, we sit there as judge and jury, and people that's on that, and we look at pictures and things like that, but we take our information from the Animal Control Officer. I'm just not sure why we aren't lingered that way through. Unless, unless you know what's been happening different.
Issue's not come across my desk yet.
This just happened last Monday, I understand.
State law governs what is or is not a potentially dangerous dog as well as what is and is not a dangerous dog. County not in possession to change that.
Correct.
So we're, we're stuck with that law.
My, my main concern in all of this, and I apologize for the length of my statement, but it was for context, but also why, or are there leash ordinance laws, leash laws in this county? And so, we need to do a better job as a whole, because me being told I can kill any animal that walks in my, I'm not going to kill the animal unless it's dangerous to us. And I wasn't, we all can't be home protecting our animals in our homes. So we can have as many guns as we want, but it doesn't matter if you're not home to protect your animal or your family. That's another, that's a big concern, is running loose, dogs running loose. I know law enforcement is inundated with other things, more important things, but it's, it's important to us.
If I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, if I might put my two cents or penny and a half in, that ordinance that was adopted, of course, you know, it doesn't follow the Sheriff's Office, it's a separate agency. But based on this incident, Animal Control would have required that individual to put that dog up and to keep that dog up.
Right.
And on his property, and if, because that's what the law was, actually not to deal with dogs, and it was to deal with irresponsible owners, like you mentioned. And so, that individual should have been required under the ordinance to keep that dog on the, that may be why you're not seeing it.
Well, he came.
And then the magistrate, the officer probably informed you that wants to get your money back for the damages and stuff, for you to get back in the loss of your animals, your chickens, birds, then you have to, to take the small things.
Right, I understand, I understand, sir. The owner called and reported the dog missing, I believe, after he realized what had happened. Because I think I talked to his mother, because she drove by worried about what was going on.
Have you followed up with Animal Control to ask them if they required him to put that dog up, if they gave him notice that he is by law required to keep that dog up?
The three times that I spoke with Animal Control, it was the same answer every time that they had, the owner just says the dog's still missing. That's it. That's all they've said.
They can still require the owner, even if the dog's missing, they can tell them, you are hereby required to keep that dog put up. It's, if they're on notice, they, there's a dog, of course, the dog's missing, which we probably know what's probably happened to that dog. Somebody's probably shot and killed that dog.
No.
Or maybe gave it away.
I believe twice, but I don't think it was. It ran away, it helped it.
Then they could be criminally charged for failing to keep that dog up.
It's also strictly liable for any, any damage caused thereafter.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rocky.
You're welcome.
Chairman, esteemed commissioners, I'm going to take slightly different tasks, and since we have an educated ear, I'm going to ask a question right off. How many people did we have in Macon County in the year 2000, when the millennium changed? Twenty-seven thousand. We are just about to go through the thirty-six thousand mark. We've got a brand-new, beautiful Ingalls store, we've got a huge complex with Walmart. When a company like Caterpillar leaves in the industrial park, somebody comes right in to take that space. You can't have an empty store on Main Street because somebody comes right along and fills that space. We are producing lots of tax revenue for you because we are growing like mad. But what does that do to us residents? It's important that we remember to be courteous and thoughtful to one another. And that requires that if a dog owner leaves his property, or opens the door of his truck or car and lets the dog out, it must be on a leash, and I demand that you enforce that law. It is not safe to walk on the greenway because people think, my dog is lovely, and he licks my hand, and he's friendly. But no, if I'm riding along on my bicycle, the dog gets curious and comes over and boom, before you know it, it's in the wheel. And in September, a person with his kids was very careless, did not have his dog on a leash. That dog charged me, I had about a half a second to see it. It turned out that he loved rubber, so he was not after me, he was after the tire. But nevertheless, he flipped me through the air, I was in the hospital for two days, and it's ended up costing me twelve hundred dollars of unreversed expenses. So I am very strongly urging that, I own pets, but if I bring them to the public arena, they are on a leash. Now, part of this is what you are doing with the dog park. And I understand, I thought about six weeks ago it was going to open, but I understand that it still has not done that. I encourage you strongly to finish the construction of that and make it available, the dog owners. Now, you all recently saw the article in the paper about the Powell Fund. And the Powell Fund says it will help pay for improvements, maintenance, and construction of greenways. Do you remember how many times in the last two years I have come to you and said, please, restore the benefits of the greenway, because the damage that was done following Hurricane Ivan is still extant in many parts of the path? And there are five sections that to this day remain unpaid, they're just gravel. So if you have a mountain bike, or you're running or walking, you can use it, but I'm on my road bike, and I can't use that section. I strongly encourage you to finish making the greenway path available to all of us in a safe condition.
Thank you.
Can you spell your last name for me, sir?
S C H L A T T U R. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm here tonight because Eric Hager is my friend. We spent countless hours sharing photos of our pets. When Eric spoke and mentioned that his pets were chickens, I noticed some chuckling behind me, I also noticed some looks from those in front of me as well, probably because chickens aren't normally considered as pets. I know Eric's chickens are his pets, I've seen them in their pet, I've seen them live in their watching television. So please just felt that chickens only are there to run around the yard and legs. My heart breaks for Eric and Sonny, like the horrific loss that they suffered in the dog attack on their pet chickens at their home in Clarks Chapel. As Eric stated, our animals are our families regardless of what type they are. We name them, we love them, we take care of them. And please, ladies and gentlemen, pets are pets. My cats are equally important as your dog, your snake, although I don't get that, but your snake or whatever, they're our, our pets. We love them, whether they're chickens, or cats, or dogs, we love them. They're not just whatever. I spent eight years at the Humane Society here in Franklin. In all those years, I've come to believe that dog behaviors, like humans, are the result of the environment and the way they've been treated throughout their lives. Bad treatment, bad dog. At that point, I came face-to-face with humans whose lack of compassion, caring, and sense of responsibility, responsibility for their pets have created such situations such as what happened at the Hager's. The responsibility for the loss of Eric and Son's pets lies directly in the dog owner, needs to be held accountable in a manner that sends a message to all dog owners in our community. Eighteen animals have died in one tragic accident. Not an accident, it was an event. As leaders of our community, I urge our commissioners to put laws, ordinances, and most importantly, serious consequences to the owners in place to prevent an incident occurrence from like this from happening within our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lady Susan. Dave Kerr.
I'll just say that I agree wholeheartedly with what the two gentlemen did earlier about the Second Amendment. I was the one, I, I didn't know the other was going on, and I, they started gathering signatures, but I would urge you, and I just commend those gentlemen for everything.
Thank you, Mr. Kerr. Ron Gentry?
He left, he told me to say thank you, but enough was said.
Anyone else would like to address the board? Not signed up?
We'd better air the vision.
All right, that'll end our public comment period, I'm going to move on to additions to the agenda. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Commissioner Chairman. If we could add, Tina Macon from Transy this year, she can request an authorization to submit a application to offer a trust fund. As you, as you'll hear, when she talks about this, it was a miracle amount, and she will not be requesting, this grant is not requiring a matching fund for planning.
Just going to again, give us a report on this, and seek consensus to move forward with submitting that application. If we can move further down the seat on reports and presentations, that would be more.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, you can. Oh, no, boy. Anybody else? Carl? Yes. All right, can you get a motion to approve the agenda? Somebody? Excuse me, who made the motion, sorry?
Carl.
Carl, motion by Commissioner Gillespie, second by Commissioner Beal, all in favor?
Aye.
I was going to try and call that out, gentlemen, so we can have the cameras up here, that way they can have it for our minutes. All right, now moving along, item nine A, under reports and presentation, Macon Citizens' Abilities Program update. Kristy Huff, Executive Director, Macon Citizens' Abilities Corporation. You're welcome.
Good evening, gentlemen, thank you so much for your time. I'm here on behalf of Macon Citizens' Abilities. My name is Kristy Huff. I serve as the Executive Director and have since 2015. I'm here to represent the agency that I serve, along with board members on our Board of Directors, who are also present. We're thankful and grateful for Mr. Gillespie and Mr. Beal's time, who have also served on our board at various times in the past. I just wanted to come to say thank you to Macon County, to the Macon County taxpayers, and to you as commissioners who have fully supported Macon Citizens' Abilities since 1988. For those of you who don't know what we do, we serve, we're a nonprofit that serves people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. We operate residential programs, we serve people in the community. We've most recently started working with children in the high school to help them find competitive work in the community. And then we also operate a day program over on Lake Emery Road that provides structured training and social opportunities, again, for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Just to give you a little bit of information, in the past five years, our budget has gone from three-point-two million dollars up to four-point-seven million dollars, so we are growing. We are thankful for the opportunities. And we just wanted to say thank you to the commissioners who have continued to support us financially each year. To give you a little bit of an idea of what we use the money that you provide us for is, we have several people that we serve who do not have any other funding. We primarily rely on Medicaid dollars to pay for the different services that we provide. But we also have a heart and a belief that it is our duty to serve residents and citizens of Macon County regardless of insurance. And so, we use the county funds that we receive to help subsidize the cost to support and provide services for those folks. We've used it to help provide transportation for people who live in more rural areas to come in for our day program. We also have used it to help develop a program with the high school. And Macon County School Board has approved funding as well, and we've been able to successfully place, in the past two years, fourteen students in competitive jobs here in Macon County. As an employer, we are just shy under a hundred employees, and we look forward to continuing to work with Macon County to look for innovative ways that we can provide services to help the persons who are at highest risk for being set aside and looked beyond, to really be an active role in, in the community. And with your help and support, we've been able to do that. So we just wanted to say thank you. Yeah, well, right now, we have eighty-seven employees, and we have twelve contracted employees.
That's just Macon?
That is, no, that is. That is, no, that is between Makin and Jackson Counties, but our primary focus is in Makin County. All but two of our homes are in Makin County.
That's incredible.
Kristi and I have been working on a little deal.
Mr. Beal has been a great support.
With Vaya, who supplies a lot of the Medicaid monies and stuff to Makin County, that, they was a little snafu and it's more or less paperwork. We did have one meeting on it, we made little progress, but no check. We will pick that back up on the 24th. So that is back on the agenda. We think that the money is there, it's just a matter of getting some paperwork fixed and everything is Christian with teeth, when you're getting this Medicaid money, it's a different world. So we will continue to work on that because that's vital. It's vital to sustain the services they provide, so we'll have that conversation again on the 24th.
Thank you. And I will say, we go through several regulatory committees, regulatory visits, we are looked at by the state, we're also looked by national accrediting agencies. And each time we have people who come, they come every three years, and we use CARF International as our accrediting agency for, they're actually an international accrediting agency for services like we provide. And one thing that they consistently remark upon is how fortunate we are to have the support of our community, and we really are. And we recognize that internally, but we wanted to express that to you all and to Makin County as a community, how much we sincerely appreciate it.
Chris, thank you.
Chris, you talked about your budget going every year, going up every year. In regards to the funding that you get from Makin County budget, has that increased?
No, that has not increased. We, our increase has come from adding services that are primarily Medicaid funded. We've tried to expand and grow where we can, as you all are, I'm sure, keenly aware of the budget limitations when it comes especially to both federal and state Medicaid dollars. It has to go a long way on a little bit. And so when I say that our budget has grown, it has been because we have expanded services here in Makin County. And then we have also added services in, a few in Haywood County and a few in Jackson County, but still primarily Makin County.
You've been able to do that without any additional fund for the county?
Correct.
I think you'd be committed to that.
Thank you.
Second, I'd like to ask you to ask your board members to stand and be written on
I would love to, thank you. If you all would stand, ones that are here. We have, and there are several who are not, I apologize, we have Mr. Harold Hesterson, who has served on our board for a long time. Next to him is Adele Boring, she is actually the grassroots founder of Makin Citizens. In 1984, she was determined to find a way to find services for her son when there weren't any in this area. So because of her and her diligence, Makin Citizens formed in 1988 and has successfully grown to where we're able to serve right now between three counties, 72 people. That's exciting. Judy Evans, who has been on our board again for several years, we're very fortunate to have her. Jean Pinkston has most recently started serving on our board, but worked as our Assistant Director and Social Worker for over 25 years. And then finally is Josh Owens, who is our President, reluctantly agreed to that, but he's been on our board and provides us with wonderful, guy that's around financial issues and various things. We're very fortunate to have an active board, diverse board of many community members. And again, thank you both for continuing to support us and serving us so diligently in the people that we represent, we really do appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, Frank, on fire department, substation update. Local Chief?
Good evening, thank you. Good evening, Board Commissioners. My name is Matt Breedlove, I'm Fire Chief, Frank Fire and Rescue. The town of Franklin received a certified letter dated 11/5/2019 from Mr. Chairman Tate requesting an update be brought to your board tonight. That was in reference to the fire substation. Tonight, we at Frank and Fire and Rescue are pleased to update you with several areas of progression that has been made. Today, the town of Franklin and Frank Fire and Rescue has obtained property that is intended for the fire substation. The location is located on MPNL Loop off the civil highway. The property is ready for building, the property has been excavated, it's got packed with ground and a gravel lot. There's paved roadway to the location with utilities and infrastructure already in place. This location was chosen with consideration to get the most service for Makin County citizens. The location will allow Frank Fire and Rescue the opportunity to serve the most effective areas that currently have a Class 9 or 10 insurance coverage area. These might include Holly Springs, Corbin Cove, Piney Grove, Butterfly Subdivision, Sanders Town, and Onion Mountain Areas. Tonight, I have provided you each with a packet that contains a copy of maps. The maps indicate the response mileage changes. The first map that you'll see shows the current Class 9 area in the color pink and the Class 10 area in gray. The second map shows the effect of changes with substation location by showing areas of five mile response in blue, a six mile response in pink, and then a very, very small portion left in gray. In addition, we at Frank Fire and Rescue now have a building committee established who are working very hard to establish plans for the substation building. This committee has made several visits to other fire substations in the region to gather information and needs. I thank you for your time tonight, I thank you for what you do for Makin County. If you have any further questions, I'll be happy to answer them to best my abilities.
Chief, you got a timeline?
Timeline, I do not. I can tell you that I'm working closely with the town administration to establish the quickest efforts to have this in service. I can't tell you exact date that I'll be ready to build the building or put this into operation, but we're working diligently and hard to get to that point. I think with all due respect, doing it with the right approach is very critical to the citizens of Makin County, so.
Thank you, Chief.
That's all I was wanting, was a two-minute update that some progress is going somewhere exaggerated or anything communication-wise, but I appreciate that, and it sounds like you're hitting the nail on the heads, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for that.
Hey, you mentioned Class 9, 10. Of those that are currently in the Class 9, 10, and this may be a loaded question, I'm asking you, how many with the new station would be brought like four?
I'll be glad to give you my research and what we have studied and we've worked with different agencies to map out this change. I've asked Justin Sessner with Town of Franklin to work with Makin County Part Mapping and Town of Franklin Part Mapping to get these maps. And accordance to that and what information I have, I would be glad to tell you that currently Franklin Fire and Rescue has 8,361 total structures within our fire district.
How many counts?
8,361 total structures. Without that substation, currently 7,632 of those are located within a five mile response area. With that being said, those in the five mile response area currently receive a Class 3, 4 rating as the state has given Frank Fire and Rescue those ratings due to their past ISO inspections. However, 654 structures are currently in a six mile response area, which makes those structures in an insurance class of Class 9. In addition to that, 75 structures are in a Class 10 area. I would be excited to tell you that with a substation built in this location and following these plans that I have submitted to you, this change would bring only 178 structures in a six mile response area. And hackily, even more, say zero structures inside a Class 10 area. That is a benefit that would allow homeowners of those structures to have insurance coverage, to have the insurance rating. The ones in the Class 10 may not have that capability at this time, so I think that's very critical.
One additional question.
You only have one call.
The property that you have, that you require some MPNL Loop road, where exactly is that house that the town acquired?
Yes, sir. If you're familiar with MPNL Loop, it's where the Duke Energy Complex sits. Mr. Drake also has a building there, it's known as his call center. Our property is next door to Drake Software's call center. The closest address, which is theirs, is 301 MPNL Loop. We would share that driveway to that complex. The property belonged to Mr. Drake previously, and the town worked graciously with me and was able to obtain that property by Mr. Drake. And I don't know where you're at in your design stages, all this is funded by tax dollars, right? Yes, sir. We receive tax money. The final cost and numbers, I can't give you, of course, tonight. But this is an unmanned station? Currently, I don't know what the future would hold. I would hope to consider that we build this with consideration, but also with respect to tax dollars and cost in mind as well. Any other questions that the board might have?
Thank you.
Chief, on behalf of the Frank Fire and Rescue and the Town of Franklin, I'd just like to say thank you for working with us, we look forward to that opportunity to work with you and continue to...
Appreciate that, that's been a pleasure.
...update the citizens. Thank you.
Kim, Major, welcome. Can we get a motion to approve?
Yes.
Don't move.
Send me the check.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thirty seconds.
So, long story short, applying for a grant, hope to get money, no match involved. Application's due tomorrow. How's that?
Good.
How's that?
Good luck, Kim.
It is going to be through the Dogwood Health Trust. They are doing, they just put out the grant applications in December. Like I said, short timeline, applications tomorrow, anything from $500 up to $25,000, they call it an immediate opportunities need grant. And basically, I have some software that's used with our vehicles that needs to be upgraded, and I am asking for that to be purchased with grant money from them.
This is for emergency purposes? This money? That's what the grants are for, right?
Right, it's for anything that does not, that's not going to be long-term, any kind of short-term planning, they even suggested purchasing software, strategic planning or specialty projects, so that's why I decided to, and it's like, I'm only asking for like $6,300, so. Small grant, it probably going to be pretty competitive, don't know if I get it. Worst-case scenario, we might not get all of it, but there's probably money to move around from some additional funds coming in that.
What's the amount, Kim, you're asking for again?
You have to ask a hard question, Derek, stop it.
Is it necessary, if you're applying or pursuing a grant that requires no matching funds, couldn't we short-circuit a little bit and up, I mean, well, you're going to have to have our approval on your application, I'm sure.
Well, this is the application, I'm going to hit send tomorrow.
Do you need our signature?
You know, on this, on this, I mean, then that, I brought it to Derek and he said yes, it needed board approval before I submitted, so. Even if it's sixty, about sixty, I'll give you the number exactly, this one is incorrect, but I have on the application that I sent you. Around $6,300, but I'll give you the exact number for minutes. So.
Thank you.
See, you already did the motion, right? Thank you, didn't look, appreciate it.
Thank you, Kim.
That's not going to be that easy. Mr. Chairman? Motion by Commissioner Beal, second by Commissioner Gillespie. Grant?
Good as new.
That's fine. Moving on to all business amendments to memorandum of transportation agreement, Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, it is strictly a housekeeping item, if you recall, we approved at the last meeting of memorandum of transportation agreement, which had been amended to incorporate the third-party transportation provider that we were going to begin utilizing. However, the agreement that was approved did not contain the signature page for that third-party provider. It lists in the agreement, everything's good, and the agreement that is included in your agenda packet tonight now includes that signature page.
Okay, can we get a motion to approve the amendment?
Make both improvements presented.
Motion by Commissioner Shields.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Beal, all in favor?
Just to provide a little update on that, both of the municipalities have approved the revised agreement, we actually sent them the one with all signature pages, so that was, so we don't have that hurdle to get through. And now we will, with the board's approval tonight of the amended agreement, we'll be moving forward with entering into the contract that was approved at last meeting with Mountain Area Transportation Services.
Do you need my signature on that?
Yes, sir, we can get that, we can get that after the meeting.
All right, item 10B, consideration of North Carolina Department of Transportation Agreement for Greenway Connector. Mr. Jack Morgan, Director of Planning, Reporting, and Development. Welcome, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. You recall back in October, it came up before you gentlemen, and they asked for permission to pursue an agreement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation to connect from adjacent to Wesley's Playground to the new bridge, going under the bridge. This is a change to one page in my contract, the amount of match, seventy thirty was incorrectly stated as eighty twenty in the contract that you received in your agenda packet. The only change is that amount at the bottom of the page. The complete contract is in the agenda packet, we're happy that. And that's the change to number six. But other than that, if accepted by the Board of Commissioners, we can proceed with that. We have some design work to do, which they have to approve, they have to approve the subcontractors we use, they have to approve the bid process, they have to approve the equipment or the materials that we use, and other than that, that's about it. Met with Mr. Andy Russell, Derek and Mr. Chester Jones, and I did the other day, and discussed some of the issues, but it's a win-win for us. It's going to, from Wesley's Playground, one of the bridges, have an ADA ramp up to the Frog's Park and Lot and come back to the bridge. It's the part that's been missing that's needed to be completed for a while.
I should approve, submit.
We'll need a budget amendment, because y'all have not approved the match funds for this. So we need a budget amendment for $70,000 total, with $49,000 coming from the NCDOT and $21,000 coming from either contingency or fund balance.
Fund balance, which manager, since it's the one time it's been...
That's fine.
How much have we got in contingency?
Seventy-seven thousand.
How much?
Seventy-seven in contingency, seventy-seven thousand in contingency right now.
Jack, is this one of those where we have to...
Jack, is this one of those where we have to pay everything upfront in the state reimburse yous?
It is, yes.
Okay. So that's a reason, that's another reason to take it from fund balance.
We've got to have the whole $70,000 appropriated, plus the $49 from DOT and then $21 from fund balance or contingency, whichever y'all desire.
Can my motion include that?
Yes, sir. That's it, Commissioner Glassby, got a motion by Commissioner Glassby from fund balance.
Fund balance, okay.
Second. Second by, second by Commissioner Shields, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
When does this start?
This start?
When does it start? I'm not sure I saw that start date.
There's never been a start date established, because we had to have this approval first, then we send the contract back to the DOT, and they sign it, and they'll give us the go-ahead.
And that all this work, that's to be addressed?
Yes.
All this? All. The executives, we...
Yes, we do have to bid after the contract work.
You have to go by state guidelines.
We do.
Yes, we'll have to get by state guidelines.
Mostly their money, so yes, we do.
So we may have a conservation easement issue, and that may slow the process down. I'm going to recommend that the county approve this this evening, but hold up on the execution of contracts until we get that conservation easement issue worked out. Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Yes.
Morello's not here to acknowledge and recommend approaches anyway. All right, courthouse security, project update.
We want to wait on Mr. Beck.
Mr. Shands, you got a meeting to come back? All by this native.
You're a real popular guy.
I guess so.
Heard we're supposed to congratulate you for your new position.
Oh, thank you. I was, for to, working for the board.
Good. Justin is the new chairman of the Macon County Planning Board, and we appreciate Joe Deal's services in that position, and we appreciate your just willing to take that on. So thank you so much.
Oh, it's my pleasure. I look forward to working with the board and the public.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Justin. Same page, Justin.
Yeah, same page.
Brian, you got a firehouse moving one closer?
That's right.
Are we going, we're going to wait for the...
Judge Brown, horrible. Prove you that nasty case. I was in high school. That's June law.
That's about start kindergarten.
Did you ever have to get my name out there?
I didn't know it was on there. What's on this?
Judge, Judge T.D. Brasson Jr.
Nice things here, too. I want them three months.
I want them to twinkle in my daddy's eye.
I was twinkle, huh?
Brasson Jr. It's probably on wall over there, is it?
All right, sir.
As all of you know, we've been on an important project. This spring will be two years that we initiated this project, of course, at the direction or the encouragement of our Superior's Court Resident Judge, who asked us to address some issues in the courthouse security. So we've done that. As you know, we formed a committee. There's people that represent every single office within the Macon County Courthouse and outside of the Macon County Courthouse. And so, we've come to where we are today, last month. I hope you noticed when you come in, 30 days ago, you approved the building of the new structure at the back of the courthouse. As of today, we are 99.5% complete. We feel like that probably tomorrow or the next day, depending on the rain, that project will be completed. Looking forward to when we leave tonight, being able to see how the lights turned out. They just installed the lights this afternoon, so we're looking forward to see just how bright it is out there. As you know, when you leave here at night, it's very dark out there, so we're hoping to see a big change there. Tonight, I'm here to talk about some proposals that we have. This is to go along with our courthouse security, with our changes that we made into the building, the x-ray machines, the metal detectors, and the moving of monitors. Working with our IT director, as well as our finance director in her office, we've been able to come up with these proposals. Mr. Manager, am I producing these proposals all at one time? Are we going to go through each proposal? How does the board recommend?
I'll just go to the end of the line.
The...
Use the summary page here.
Okay. The proposal, first proposal is the monitor viewing stations, which is an amount of $3,318.80. Proposal number two is the exit door audible alarms. Don't know if you noticed it, you probably didn't, those are actually already marked, so we have a lot of hesitation coming to those doors, because they're already got the wording on it's an exit only, an emergency exit. But that's for that, which is $982. Proposal number three is a secured courtroom camera relocation and troubleshooting of cameras and DVRs for an amount of $1,120. Number four proposal is rewiring of the gate at the back of the courthouse, also known as the Sally Port. That is the new thing that was constructed in the back. Number five is for access camera and Speco NVR installation for x-ray machine locations in the stairwell at a cost of $999. Proposal number six is access camera to be installed at the smoking area outside wall of the Sally Port. That's the, instead of being called the smoking area, what it really is is the very beginning of the parking lot. Number seven, access cameras to be installed on the outside wall of the Sally Port Gate parking area and breezeway of the annex building, a cost of $2,706.98. Proposal number eight is a secured courtroom access control for a cost of $2,815. And then, the last item proposal, number one from the Gov Direct, that is the data system, the computer that will store all of the footage that is taken within the courthouse, as well as the body cameras and in-car cameras of our patrol cars. We wanted to make sure, working with IT, that we got a system big enough that takes everything, and it all comes into one, and that we also have a backup for. And that's a cost of $19,933.76, bringing a total of $34,403.3. What we did is, working with IT and our finance director's office, we were able to get these quotes and get their expertise. I'll be honest with you, I don't have a lot of knowledge in a lot of the equipment that we're talking here. I've met with the judge, we met with our committee last week, was it last Friday that we met? Last Friday? And let them aware that we were going before the commissioners tonight to discuss this. And it's at this time that I would be happy to take any questions or have any discussions.
Surfed into committee and discarded, did you review, and the committee came into agreement that this is what we need at this time? We agreed, and I will note that the numbers on the summary are different from the numbers on the back of individual proposals. I think that's because of the tax.
Sales tax, yeah.
Sales tax.
We don't have to budget sales taxes.
There's no problem there. I think the way that the committee looks at this, gentlemen, is that, I stayed up too late watching football last night. We're in the red zone with this project, and another $34,000 to get it up and going, that's seven points. And we don't need to fumble the ball or settle for a field goal. Let's go ahead and do what we've decided to do. Anything, anything other than what's before you would result in substantial delay, and it's time to just go ahead and take care of it. And I appreciate everything that y'all have done and the hard work that has gone on with the committee, and we hope that you'll see fit to just go ahead and move this on. I think Chester, with that amount of money, there's, it's all above board, there's no need for extra bids or anything else on that.
As I understand the process that was taken, these were essentially two different projects. My understanding was is that the, I'm not real good with the language, this is all technical stuff way above my head, but my understanding is the NAS system, the storage system, that's The decision to move forward with that was based upon the need for that in connection with the dash cams and body cams, and as we started looking into the courthouse project, we determined that that can also be used there as well. But that process was already underway to acquire there, and that is being purchased through a statutory purchasing agency, and so it's effectively a bid project, because that pricing has been agreed to by the company that's going to provide the equipment in response to a bidding process. So that one's effectively done that way. The other, the SMS integration, I think that total's what, 12,000, 13,000? Is that about right?
About 14.
14. In any event, the law in North Carolina basically says that if you're $90,000 or more, you have to follow a formal bid process. We clearly don't meet that. And then there's a law that basically says that if you are $30,000 up to that $90,000, you follow an informal bid process. So this sum technically doesn't comply, or doesn't require a formal bidding process, this particular project.
Mr. Manager, have you reviewed the numbers? You're in agreement with the total?
I have looked at, I have looked at the numbers with the sheriff and actually went over and discussed them with the sheriff and the finance, all of such and that.
Well, we heard the judge, and we kicked this can down the road for how long now? So let's, like he says, let's go. So I'll make the motion, we approve the amount as presented in the summary.
Thirty-four, four, three, budget amendment from fund balance?
Some fund balance, just by...
Thank you.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bill, fund balance. We have a second by Commissioner Shields, is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a couple comments if I could. County attorneys made very clear that these, this work is well below the thresholds that's set by the North Carolina Gender Statute. Nonetheless, it's, as it has concerned me for the past three years, it concerns me tonight that we choose not to bid this, and we choose to exclude other vendors from opportunity to bid on this work. So while I support what, what the process, while I support the end product, I don't appreciate or support the way that we're going about. Second comment is, is it safe for me to say that once this work is done, which is not a whole lot of work, then everything else is done and this system will be up and operational?
I'm hoping, I'm hoping that this portion of it will be completed, that we will, there's still a couple of unknowns.
This portion being?
This portion getting the, this is, all this is about is making sure that we have the computer system that is going to save all videos from the courthouse as well. Okay. Then also, we have to make sure that it will make sure that it records all of our activities there at the, each of the new, where it's going to be the new entryways of the courthouse through the security measures, and make sure that, a lot of this, Mr. Gillespie, has been a lot of unknowns, and we're not underst, we didn't know some of these costs. For example, when we, when we had a couple of cameras that went out, we didn't realize that when we built the Sally Port, that it was going to be taking a view of a certain area, and so we're going to have to move these cameras around. And so that's, that's something that we didn't realize. As far as an extensive cost, I mean, I don't think we're going to have an extensive cost. There's a whole lot more issues that need to be taken care of that came out with the, with not only the study of us and the marshals and the North Carolina Sheriff's Association, but also of the space needs analysis. And one of the things that, you know, one of the problems I think, and I'm going off a little bit here, but one of the problems that I think we fail as a county is we're not able to get some of that information out adequately. There's a lot of misconception in our community that now that the space needs analysis has been done, and they've come up with these big numbers, that you all are automatically going to build a $72 million law enforcement center and courthouse and all that. And you and I know that that conversation has never taken place, and there, and there's been no discussions on that. And so the public doesn't realize that, and they think, I say all that to say this, based on the work of this committee and the Sheriff's Association and the marshal service, we're fixing some of the things that they have addressed that need to be fixed at a whole lot less cost by doing it here at the courthouse. And so, I say that also to say, there's things that are going to have to get done that we may not realize yet until we start getting into those things. And so I'm very hesitant to say, and I feel like you're asking me, am I going to be coming back for any more money on this project?
I'm not asking that one bit.
Okay.
What I was curious about is, when are we going to start scanning folks? When are you going to start scanning me when I walk through the door?
Publicly, there's a reason why I can't say, and I'm not going to.
Is that?
No. There's a couple of more steps that we have to take that I don't think there's going to be a big cost. I don't want to publicly say what that is, I will say so privately. And while I'm saying that, I want to thank our media. Throughout this project for the last year and a half, the media has not reported a lot of the information that they're hearing in these commit, this committee, because it's a risk. It's a safety issue for the public and for you all and for anybody in this courthouse. So we're being sort of quiet about some of the things, because otherwise, you're just opening Pandora's box and letting somebody out there know where the, where the problems are within the courthouse, and so we're trying to address those. I'll privately tell you, one of the, one of the issues that we just had last week that we didn't realize that we've done is, we were required to have a training, which ended up costing us a couple thousand dollars, because I had to have everybody in courthouse security go through that training. So last Saturday, on their days off, all those employees that work courthouse security came in and spent eight to 10 hours in that training. And they'll be doing that again in the next few days, on another day of their day offs for an additional training they're required. Luckily, this time, there's no cost to it, because the person that did the first training has offered to come back for free, and it's as part of that equipment that we've now installed into the courthouse. So there may be some small related things associated with this, up until it's up and running, and we're not going to, Mr. Gillespie, we're not going to say effective February 1st, because we've already made that mistake, we were going to... 1st, because we've already made that mistake, we were going to do it January 1st, go into effect. But what we're actually going to do is, we're going to go ahead and, and put it into effect on a temporarily basis where we only, for instance, if we opened it tomorrow and started using, utilizing the equipment, what we're going to do is, we're going to randomly do people as they come in, because we want to try really hard to not interfere with the business of the county and, and keep people out there at the door and they start lining up, because we don't know exactly what we're doing. So I want to make sure that everybody is trained, everybody is able to go through the process and get people in and out of the courthouse in a fashion, fashion manner. And I want to make sure, so my staff has already agreed that that's a great idea, we're going to do that, and I, I hope to have that in effect. But I hope that we're a little bit of a nuisance to you when you come to the next county commissioner meeting, I'll just leave it at that.
Good deal. Mr. Gillespie, any further questions?
There's a lot to say, and I, I hope I answered your question, I was trying to.
Did you repeat?
No.
And I say where Carl was at, forty thousand last month, forty thousand this month. We approved, expended here, we, we approved a projected budget for this project.
But, having said that, I don't want to look like an irresponsible department head. It was understood at the beginning of the process, we tried to have a budget produced and presented to you all to be able to approve in July, but we were put off because, being a responsible county manager, we didn't know exactly what we were going to do. They want you all, and he wanted to wait till the space needs analysis come back, and so we did not do a budget for this in July. And so the agreement was, and the conversation was, that we would come back after the space needs analysis and look at some of these things and see if it was necessary, what we were wanting to do, and see what their recommendations of. And the good thing about it is, what you have done is you not only have accomplished this task, but you all as a, as a board have been, it's been recommended to you by four different entities other than you making that call. And of course, the taxpayers are going to hold you accountable for it, but you and I are able to say, we didn't say this alone, four different entities said it as well. And so we've been able to address it. So, you know, I'm hoping that this July, we're going to be able to have an adequate budget to be able to ask for and for you all to approve, because we're, we're that far along, but we weren't able to.
Well, we've got a line out in the upcoming budget.
Correct.
Just a point of clarification. My line, my concern is not that every month it's, it's more money, my concern is that we're precluding vendors from bidding on projects, we're not getting multiple bids off the project.
Well, this is a special, let me speak to them, this is a specialized thing for thirteen thousand dollars to keep us on track, that we kicked the can two years. This is a specialized thing, this is what Carl does for a dividend, but there's very few local, this is a local business with local employees, something that this board has always talked about having. So I don't see, I mean, local vendors is fine, but I don't think they'd be lining up for thirteen grand worth of work. They're so busy, everybody's so busy, the other part's done being bid, so it's just thirteen, some thirteen thousand, a few dollars. So as far as putting that out to other vendors, that's all well and good, but this specialized line of work is, it's not like buying lights or other things that we bid on, it's, it's a different kind of work, and there's very few here locally that does that kind of work. So I think that, that we need to move ahead and get it started and.
It's also, it's also my understanding, if I understand it correctly, is that some of this equipment, we can't have another outside agency or business involved with it, because it is, and the IT director is here, he could probably explain it a lot better than I can, but like the, I think the control panel, we, another outside business can't have, they can't attach their stuff to that or.
Can't work on something that there's existing maintenance contract.
Correct, do what?
Can't work on something that there's existing maintenance contract, no. That only, that only, that only touches one of these proposals.
Okay.
You're absolutely correct. That does apply to them.
All right, call to get a motion to approve.
Let me sorry, you'll say. You watched the ballgame, did you?
I did watch the ballgame. Ham was at work at six.
So you're good.
All right, call question on the vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
All right. Go pass this, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
All right, new business. Do we want to stay here, Mr. Manager, just wrap up?
Us will, yeah, we don't have much. We're in a close session. We can, we can go in the jury room.
Sure.
All right, item 11A under new business, fiscal year, is it really budget kickoff time?
It's budget kickoff time, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
We'll do it again.
Present, you're going to propose us some dates?
Yes, I was thinking that the, February the 6th is on a Thursday. We have, if you recall, we've been doing these budget kickoff meetings for about the last four years on a weekday, the board has seemed to, to be preferable to that, and if we could, you know, if you all would to, if we could start about 10 o'clock, and then we could, we could have a, we could have presenters up until lunchtime, ready for lunch, and then come back in at, at 1:00 and go till, till 3:00 or 4:00. Or we could begin at 9:00 and, and go to, break for an hour and go to 3:00. But again, that's Thursday, February 6th, Friday, February 7th, as long as, you know, if that's how you all want to do it.
We're going to do it both days?
No, no, we're going to do it one or the other, we'll have one.
I think for most of us, I don't, I didn't speak for Carl or Paul, but 10:00 would work better than 9:00, get everybody, if we go 10:00, you want to go as late as you want to.
Okay.
What about the 6:00 or 7:00? The Thursday's fine with me.
Thursday and 6:00.
That's better than Friday, really.
Okay, that, that's fine, that's perfect.
So 10:00 AM, February 6th, is that good with everyone?
So we'll recess this meeting, Mr. Chairman, until 10:00, Thursday, February 6th.
Requesting proposals for audit services.
Thanks.
And so last year, we decided, when I solicited those proposals, they were for a three-year period. And of course, last year, we decided to stay with Martin Starons at a cost of $65,800. So the two, the second year price is $67,800, which is a 3% increase, and then when we look forward to fiscal year 2021, it will be the same fee of 67,800. So tonight, as required by the local government commission, I need the board's approval of the audit contract for fiscal year 2019, 2020, and again for $67,800.
Questions, motions?
I'll make the motion, we approve the recommendation of our finance director. If you remember, our last audit, I think it was a little bit delayed, done an excellent job, and, and Lori would have told us, she didn't think that was the prior price. All audits, if you're in that world, is going up, especially in the government, any, any bid between sides. So I'll make the motion, we approve the finance director's recommendation.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bill.
Aye.
I have a second by Commissioner Shields. Questions? Where I'm going to ask, you know me on this one, I'm not going to ask about the money, that's fine. Is, is there a reason, based upon your professional opinion, to have, would it be good for the county to have another, a county firm to look at this? How long have they been with Martin Starons?
I'm not sure, I've been there since 2011, and they've been our own firm. That's why I did the RFB last year. You know, it's not a service that you're required by statute to look at, but you know, your request, and like Mr. Commissioner Gillespie's request, I did do the proposals last year, and we have employees with Martin Starons, that they do an audit partner rotation every few years, so you get fresh eyes.
So you're getting fresh eyes.
Yeah, you're getting fresh eyes, they rotate audit partners, and they also rotate the in charge, that's the sign of making a county.
Every three years, right?
Yeah, so we get fresh eyes through that perspective, so I'm comfortable with staying with Martin Starons.
Now, any further questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, item 11C, Highlands Mountain Real Estate Occupancy Tax Penalty waiver.
I don't really have any additional info, her letter was in your agenda packet, and you know, the statutes or the ordinance doesn't allow that you can waive her penalties for good cause shown.
I think our history shows we've been approving most of the, I think all of them so far.
Yes.
We're just happy they're paying, unlike probably most of them.
Because her actual tax due was about 200, 260 bucks, and she paid that, she just paid it late, so.
There was one letter, I can't fully read, they said they just forgot, because I think they missing some illnesses, and am I correct?
This one wasn't an illness?
No, the next one, I think.
Next one, yeah.
Maybe it's the next one, okay, thank you. Well, Mr. Chairman, we have already set that precedent. If the board, however, they feel about.
Can we do the idea, it's like that?
No, you have to do them individually.
Good cause shown. We're going to motion.
That's the.
To waive the occupancy tax penalty for good cause. Good cause shown.
Good.
Good cause shown. I'll make the motion, we approve this presentation. Motion by Commissioner Shields.
Take it.
Second by Commissioner Bill, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on to item 11D, same thing. Motion by Commissioner Shields, for good cause shown.
Take it.
Second by Commissioner Bill, all in favor?
Aye.
Item 11E, community funding pool recommendations.
Mr. Carter.
You're not wearing a cock.
Welcome, Dan.
Thanks for staying.
Good for saying your name.
I'll owe you all my money, because I was 30, 40. Wow. Thank you.
Turn this thing down here. Thank you.
Oh, oh, I got hit by a light, you know.
Karen had a meeting with the library that she had to attend, I'm sure she's home with him. Anyway, and Karen Steinwetter was supposed to do it, but she had a family emergency, so I found out about this after, so here we go. There were nine grant applications, the committee's recommending funding for eight of those. The recommended funding for this first phase is $43,714. We had a low number of applicants, and as a result, we'll be conducting a second round of grant applications. We surmise the low number of applicants was due to several factors. We had several people tell us that they were confused about the changes in our procedures with the new bylaws and the dates and all of that. Others were confused because they, they thought that the nonprofit, well, the nonprofit community thought that the funding for this grant was discontinued, whereas it was with the town, but not with the county. So we didn't get applications from those people. And then there were several people, Karen Steinwetter told us that even the Macon County Community Foundation had fewer applicants than they usually do this year for some reason, not, not sure why. So we voted to accept a second round of grant applications in time to attend the March Commissioners Meeting and use the rest of the money at that time.
Do you know the one that was not recommended, Ms. Carter?
Yes, it was the Humane Society, and they will be able to apply for the next round, yes. There was just vital information missing from their application.
Twenty, twenty-something thousand, it looks like.
It's about 30, $31,286 left.
Good.
Okay. Thank you for supporting the nonprofits in the community for the vital work that they do, and also thank them for the work that they do.
Appreciate your work for passing through all this. How many is on the committee, ma'am, Ms. Carter?
There's, I think there's 10 of us. Hard to tell, because we never have a meeting that everybody gets to attend.
Can we get a, a motion to approve partial recommendations? Motion by Commissioner Shields. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, consent agenda, was something, somebody aboard here would like to have an item or made for discussion, we'll take a motion to approve all the items on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Bill.
Aye.
Second by Commissioner Shields, all in favor?
Aye.
I don't think we have any comments at this time. Manager?
No, sir.
We do have reason for a closed session.
Preserve the attorney-client privilege.
Preserve the attorney-client privilege, are you expecting action following?
Um, possibly.
Possibly. And after we come out of that, we're going to be recessing, not adjourned, the recessing our meeting to Thursday, February 6th at 10:00 AM, Commissioner Porter at the 5 West Main Street. Motion to go on a closed session, Mr. Chairman. Second by Commissioner Gillespie, all in favor?
You want to mute?
I said it to you, I want to go on there, too. I said it to you, I want to go on there, too.
Hey, guys.
Everybody did.
Office pickup!
I had him on a tube of sex, and you wanted to, I said, love me to death.
All right, can we get a?
Motion to.
10:00 AM, Thursday, February 6th.
That.
Motion for a fed mode. 5 West Main Street, Commissioner's Board, ready?
It's a dog.
Motion by Commissioner Higgins, second by Commissioner Shields, all in favor?
Aye.
Get your board, I said.
Good guy.
Me, my son.